Commission's work session dedicated to advancing the discussion leading to a vote on a spending plan, adopting the spending plan for 2025. We have Sally Rashardi and Ginny Monroe with us. We have Sarah Jones online. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, I'm here.
Want to make sure Sarah can hear us.
Can you hear me?
She's talking, but it's.
Yeah, can you not hear me?
Sarah, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
She's talking. You just can't hear her.
Okay.
My mic's on. Hello, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes.
Wonderful. Hey, Sarah. What I'm wondering is if you have the attachment that I sent prior to the CRC meeting last week, the spending plan.
Yep, I do.
Great. Could you open that up to the 14th slide and then we'll all be looking at kind of the same thing?
Got it.
All right, not present today is so far at least Jerry Seiler. We'll see if Jerry joins us, but we'll just go ahead and start getting our work done. Pulling up. So we can share this if it's easier on your neck.
Yeah. I'll be back at the. The chiropractor and the neurosurgeon.
See if I can make it bigger.
Or I could go over and sit by Karen and call myself Kevin Dante.
Don't do that, Sally.
Hey, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna grab one because my screen's incapacitated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so what? I guess I'm proposing a couple of things that we we focus on today. One is to, we have a, we have a technical requirement to file the spending plan and to get it approved by December 1st. And so.
Right.
That is an exercise in taking the money that we have. If I'm gonna kind of pick up where we left off on Thursday. We said we've got a million, approximately a million two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. That is the maximum amount of money we expect to. We're estimating to have. We don't have it now, but it will, it's a combination of what we will have at year end and the revenues we anticipate receiving next year.
Yeah.
And so this cash flow considerations aside, it's just the the total amount by year end next year, total revenues plus year end 2024 cash on hand. So we need to, we need to bucket it. And so I would like to try to come away today with a sense as to how we feel that one million two hundred and thirty eight thousand ought to be bucketed. And there's several questions that we have to evaluate to get there. The other thing I'd like to come away with today is a sense as to what priorities we would have for projects and investment spending for next year. We don't have enough money to do everything. Like to kind of get a sense as to if we have one versus the other. Let's start to figure out how we feel about that because otherwise it'll be the first one in the door gets considered and I, before these first ones start walking in the door, maybe a relative priority or relative feeling about, you know, how we, how we feel about these things is probably a good thing to have in our pockets. So that we don't come to something we really want to do and find out we, you know, we don't have the capacity to do it any longer. Where we could have, if we don't consider the priority. As it's up. Sarah, you good with that?
Yep.
All right, cool. All right. So let's start with the, does anybody have any questions about the one million two thirty eight?
Well, I would say that, you know, you say that that's available to be spent, but that would leave us at a zero balance.
Yes.
And so, you know, we have never been at a zero balance and by law, I don't think you can be.
So question one is reserve, what?
Yeah.
What should we remove from this number to save?
Yeah, you need to have some in reserve.
Yes.
Is that something we would include on the spending plan? That, could we have that on there, like a line item of reserve for future?
Well, the, the, the format that has been presented, two formats have been presented to us, one by Baker Tilly and one by Barnes and Thornter. Neither of them have that as a category. And I suspect that's because redevelopment commissions aren't banks and we should not be, you know, just piling up reserves. Now, I think the way to do it is we can earmark within some of these categories, right? The capital expenditure category, for example, we could be building towards a particular project and use that, use that as reserve funds.
Like if we knew we wanted to buy a building or, you know, and it's really a million dollar project that we don't necessarily want to do all in one year as we build.
Yeah. But we can agree, I think, as a, as a team that no matter what, we don't want our balances to go below X. Last year, that number was, I thought we, we we underestimated it, but I thought we were going to end up, the projection was two with between two and three hundred thousand dollars. And then we said, we expect revenues of five hundred and something thousand. So we set a budget around the five hundred. We said, we're just gonna hold on to the two to three hundred. Because we didn't feel comfortable going below that. If that number still sounds good, we can say, all right, three hundred is our, you know, we're always gonna keep three hundred. You know, for rainy day stuff or.
I would say.
Bill comes through.
If we end up with debt service in the future, you know, this upcoming year or the following year, we'd need to figure what your debt service was plus your two or three hundred.
Right. What is the Karen? When we write the overlapping tax and units and we say what we are willing or not unwilling to release, and I think they hold the reserve two times the debt service.
Basically, if you, you know, if your spending plan isn't more than. If you're gonna have two hundred percent.
Got that on there.
That letter? You sent it in April, right?
It's not in the letter. It's.
Okay. Well, maybe while you're looking at that, we can. Because our debt service next year, I think, is eighty thousand. Yeah, eighty thousand. So that would suggest a minimum of.
Is that part of that eighty thousand, thirty thousand that we committed? Okay. That's actual debt.
Oh, yes, no. It's left on the bond, I believe. I think it might have. The one, the larger one finishes this year, the next one.
Also next year. Okay, next. So that's probably the eighty thousand overpaying at the last.
I think it might have the thirty thousand per water though. Looking up.
I'm not included in that.
Yeah. I was pretty sure that was emitted phones.
The number eighty three thousand. I don't know how I got it.
This is smaller. Could have been fifty thousand to overpaying Marty and therapy toward the. Non-project that we. That would make sense to come around.
And the water bond, the water commitments, that thirty thousand. That done. Off the side. We need to prepare for. Yeah. Any infrastructure that we have going on. The well, which I think is gonna be completely.
Stormwater bond forty six thousand eight hundred. The water commitments thirty thousand, so that's seventy six. And then we've got the Christmas lights at sixty three hundred. So that's the eighty three thousand. Those three items. All right, so our debt out of that is, I think the, the water commitment counts as that. So that's seventy six thousand, so times two. Probably, right? Okay. So why don't we just, why don't we take three hundred off the top and just say that's our.
Yeah.
Yeah. Covered us.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, we were talking about vehicles, the emergency vehicles. When.
Off this chart.
Yeah, when we decided we needed to. We need to have a work session. So when I look at Karen's numbers and I added them all up.
Squad car, we have one price. We could potentially add together.
I think it was like two point two million if it went through twenty twenty nine, wasn't it?
Yeah, and that's without some of the squad cars in there. So I think if we added a hundred and sixty thousand. Eight point three four. Over the next five years. I just put forty thousand times four where there's empty slots by squad cars. Just as a random estimate.
How much?
I come up with two million three hundred forty thousand is the town's expecting to invest in the next five years between ambulance, squad and fire.
And how much for squads?
I put forty thousand estimates because one of them had forty thousand estimate.
Okay.
I just added one more in there. Yeah.
See. And. There we go. Karen, did you indicate that the township will pay half of some subset of this two million three hundred forty thousand?
So when it comes to EMS and fire, the township and the town split vehicles in that. Yes, do that with the. So these numbers are technically our share, doesn't include township, right? On the engine one, it's our share. On the tanker, that's in twenty seven, order tanker for twenty nine, that's the full amount. Okay. And as is the grass truck. So basically, anything after twenty seven is, is the full amount.
Okay. So is the forty thousand per squad car, is that a half?
No, it, the police department doesn't cover the township. And so that's solely on the town, those costs.
Okay, that's a full, okay. But ambulance is for township too, right? Because they're firing.
Yeah. They're both Culver Union Township.
Okay.
And Culver Union Township Emergency Services.
Now, there has not been, there, there has been instances where the redevelopment commission has purchased vehicles and helped purchase vehicles, but it hasn't been a year, a yearly commitment.
There's not been a standing commitment by the redevelopment commission. It's been as requested.
As requested. And what is the town councils, now, since there's two town council members here and the, and the clerk, maybe I can get a sense as to what the town council is thinking with respect to what the commission's role is in funding this line item.
That's a good question. I, I support redevelopment supporting emergency services budget mainly because we do not bring in the revenue to outpace. You know, Sally and I are, my first year on council seventeen, eighteen years ago, you could buy an ambulance for eighty thousand. Now they're in the four hundred thousands, but it's not like our revenue went up in that time. And our EMTs are not getting rich certainly. So it's not like our salary line item has increased that much. Where we struggle on, on that is part-time people are hard to get here. So then you end up with people in overtime where your full-time employees, even some part-time, I imagine, have been. So that line item can go up, but it's not as significant an increase as the increase with equipment going up. Fire trucks you used to be able to get for six, seven hundred thousand, now they're one in one million to two million. And I'm seeing this in other counties too, like Stark County, they can only buy used right now. They cannot afford anything. I also don't think, even if the county gets involved and does the special tax, I don't know how much that is gonna get to the community, to what they're gonna do. And I don't trust the county dealing with this issue for obvious reasons. I'd rather us deal with it locally. To the best that we can.
I think we need to be prepared because I don't think we're gonna see a windfall from the county. If we did, it'd be the first time in the history of Marshall County.
Yeah. And they've never approved that. The only time we've had a special tax approved or needed is for the jail. So I think at this point, probably eighty counties have the tax that helps pay for emergency services. We do not.
Yeah, one of them, yeah.
And I don't know that we will. And even if we are, I'm not sure how much of it'll end up Culver because our, we have good quality equipment and our public needs even more desperate than our own. But I know the township cannot sustain the, we try to replace the ambulance, for example, every five years, a fire truck every ten to fifteen.
Well, it's hard to say on that because usually they're twenty to thirty years old, but they've got, you know, a couple tankers.
Yeah, they're rotating their something.
And so it comes up every four to five years. And then, of course, you have the one, you know, turns into a dog.
Now, Union Township has always been in a more fortunate situation than some of the other townships that cannot even touch contributions the way Marlene does. But Marlene cannot sustain the level, the fifty percent level for very much longer. She does forecast it that out based on increases in equipment over that same period of time. So it's, it's getting tougher, that's for sure, just really in the last, I'd say, three years.
Yeah.
Is this the? I'm trying to figure out how to weigh this against other potential priorities. And the first question that would come to mind is is this an already reduced ask, right? Or is this the, the full ask and and that there's potential ways to stretch it from here? If this is already the stretch to schedule as is reasonable, right? Because doing, funding this obviously means other things don't get funded and we, we would want to make sure that, I'm not saying we shouldn't prioritize it or prioritize it as a, you know, as a full fund item. I'm just wondering if you would expect that to be consideration given that the, the costs have gone up, but.
I wouldn't wanna fund everything in full, certainly, you know, like I know there's a need for for four hundred thousand and then two hundred and forty and then nine hundred and fifty potentially in twenty seven. Maybe it's, so, because the town has some funding capability. We've been paying for equipment for decades, right? So I think I would, I'd want us to think through like, what level of commitment are we comfortable with? You know, and is it over a three-year period or five-year period, kind of like with the water project?
Yeah.
That was a much smaller project and smaller cost to commit to, but I guess I see it a little bit similarly. But we also want to be in a position of being able, like, if we want to do a capital project on Main Street or be able to buy a building or, you know, be able to respond.
Right.
Obviously, too.
I mean, we talked about it in terms, it is a really crude, but we've got a light, lighted building that, that we have the ability with our tools to address. And we say, well, yeah, we got this lighted building. Yeah, but look, we got this nice shiny new fire truck, right? And it was one or the other. And that it, it may be that we had to protect things from burning down. And the old truck was, you know, had to be replaced and, you know.
See, from an economic development standpoint, when I think about ambulance, having a paramedic service, we are trying to sustain a much higher cost of quality service by having paramedic versus a basic or advanced like some of the other small communities do. And, and we should, we have a, an aging population in Culver because we're a retirement community. So that has also led to its own expense, like becoming paramedic, but it's good economically because, you know, companies rate you on that now. Do I want to be in Marshall County with my business if I can't count on paramedic service?
Yeah, yeah.
This is why I have such a problem with our county officials not addressing the issue at the hospital. You can't have a baby in Marshall County. What workforce are you gonna be able to bring, right? So, which is kind of ironic, we're having this discussion because it does bring up those sorts of questions.
Yeah. Okay.
So my, my question, Marty, just a quick question on that, because it's got fire engine number one for four hundred thousand for twenty twenty five, and then another two hundred thousand in twenty twenty six. Is, is this what we're considering or is that what the Culvers, the whole portion, Culvers portion is? Like the town may have some funds, there might be some other funding sources, or is this on top of the other funding sources?
My understanding is, Karen, you want, take that one. I was gonna say, this is net of township contributions. And the share that has to be funded from some local source, CRC or town council.
Yes, so the two, 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 two thousand twenty five, the four hundred thousand, that is the town's portion of the fire truck, the engine one. And then in twenty, the two hundred thousand is the town's portion.
Of the same.
Of the same truck.
Final payment on that, that truck.
Yeah, and then delivered in other words. And then we'll, we'll purchase a squad car in, in twenty six for the police department based on their rotation. After that, in twenty, going on, those, those costs are the full cost of the item.
I guess my question is, as a town council, I mean, do we know what other funding sources there may be for this four hundred thousand for next year? Or are we pretty much it?
That's coming out, right now, it's coming out of the general fund to purchase that. And that's what we committed to when we purchased, when we said we'd go ahead and purchase that truck.
And the town is budgeted for the four hundred thousand?
Four hundred thousand, correct.
So that truck's already, already ordered and.
It is ordered and under construction.
All right.
So we just haven't made a payment because we haven't made. But we haven't made a payment yet because it's, it's, that portion has not been finished.
So anything we would commit would come off that, what the town had already planned on paying.
Correct.
Four hundred thousand, okay.
Or the town township, depending on how we.
Yeah, I mean, if, part of this too is, you know, the possibility of leaving some of the, the burden on the township because the, the tip is made up of some parcel, lay of parcels that are solely in Union Township. And so it might be a nice thing for, for.
A nice thing for for you all to do to to help Marlene a little bit as well, or at least throw our bone every once in a while.
Yeah, like Collins Luxury Storage Units were in the TIF. And now they're.
They were in the.
They're now our TIF, they were in the township, so she loses a little job.
Well, we, yeah, we annexed a bunch, but then there's also a couple properties that are Union Township. They're not, they've not been annexed by the town.
Do we know what percentage of the ti- our TIFs are Union Township versus the town?
I have to, I could probably get that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, no rush, just curious.
I mean, there's not, it's not overwhelming. It's probably three or four parcels. But it's.
Was that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still, you know, some parcels that are in Union Township and, you know, we want to be good. Good neighbors, but also good stewards. And so I was just wanted to throw that out there.
So Karen, you it's.
Sorry, sorry. So if we designate, you know, let's say, to just say two hundred thousand, would we need to say? A hundred and fifty thousand might be going to the town of Culvers portion of it and fifty thousand is to alleviate the township's portion of the, of the fire engine? Or do we not?
Ask, because no one needed that, that, why, the ambulance. There was some of it. Was reduced. I'm gonna have to look at that. Designate, just to say, we want to contribute to the the township portion. Just, just to be clear, too. And that way, it's all above board. It's in writing. So.
For the spending plan, we could just lump it into one, but when we actually vote on those funds. We have to designate. Or we'd want to designate, make it clear, right?
And then, just to jump back, you were asking about the two hundred percent. I looked it up in state code. The amount of excess assessed value determined by the commission is expected to generate. Generate more than two hundred percent of the amount of allocated tax proceeds. Received. To make the principal and interest payment and any amount necessary for other purposes. So if there's more than two hundred percent. Of. Of basically committed funds, then you need to revert some of that assessed value, not the, not the money, just the assessed value. Back, which in doing that, just to go through the whole process, you'll. You'll transfer that assessed value, which will not result necessarily in any more funds for the overlapping taxing units. It will just drive down their tax rate.
Yeah.
And it may not even.
Oh, we don't come anywhere close.
Two hundred percent of what is committed in the spending plan and represents a commitment, so. Okay, all right, cool, great. All right, so no guidance on reserve funds.
We don't have to. Two hundred percent of. What you're.
Yeah.
Terrific. Basically budgeting.
So you had suggested two hundred for the vehicle, safety vehicles, when this verse came up? Is that still your recommendation?
I will take two hundred for an engine. That would be fantastic. And it would. But I mean, is that for just this next year? And then you'll just kind of go year by year on.
As I say, are we allowed to commit multiple years and do a per year?
This is a twenty twenty-five spending plan. I I would put it that way.
So you'd have to recommit next year if you were gonna do it again. Sense. Well, we're only one-year terms, so that also makes sense.
We can't commit our successors.
Yeah, we can only bond.
You can commit them to a bond.
That water commitment.
Yeah, that's kind of a multi-year commitment, right?
That's thirty.
Maybe you do the commitment to the level of your. So on council, you can commit beyond a bond, you're committing twenty, thirty years, obviously, but generally with a contract. With another, like a vendor, you don't go beyond the longest term. So like Sally and I have three. Years and three months left of our term. So if we were signing a contract with Kevin Berger, have Easter day, do some work for the town, we wouldn't sign it for longer than three years. So we could look at it that way. It's like we're making a contract with the town. We're gonna commit this amount. But no longer than your elected officials who are sitting on the board. Not that you have to, because we made the thirty thousand commitment over that period of time, right?
Yeah, yeah. And like.
And that's just.
Any bonds.
There's no MOU or anything, right?
Right.
That's just a. We all know about the thirty thousand until it's expired.
Yeah.
Kind of.
I think there might, I think we signed a resolution at the time.
Yeah.
For the thirty thousand.
Okay.
To commit thirty thousand toward their bond.
Okay.
But I wouldn't have any, any problem with the two hundred. Because I think that the need is there, especially if, you know, if you don't spend it one year. Like twenty-six. You wouldn't necessarily spend, need to spend it all, but the following year, you've got a tanker. That.
That tanker cost won't hit and. Hit all that at once, too. It'll be the same, similar.
Yeah, right.
Well, I I would like to propose that we leave it. To our successors sitting here a year from now to determine what the funding needs are.
Okay.
Because the revenue outlook could be different. They could be more generous. They they could have less, right?
Yeah, with the dunes going online, that revenue could go up over time. So commit to the spending plan this year.
Up to maximum. This is a maximum spending plan. If we would go above two hundred, then we would need to file an amended plan. With the town council. Okay, Sarah, let me have your thoughts, please.
I was gonna say, why don't, why don't we set it at two hundred right now? See what the rest of our plan ends up being and if we can. Do another hundred, just if. Necessary, just do that. Edit it at the end to adjust.
Okay.
I'd be okay, I'd be okay with doing the two hundred for the police fire capital. For next year and then. If the need comes up during the year when we have to pay that out, when they are looking for those funds, if we have those funds and no other projects have come up, then. I would say file the amended spending plan and do it. But until we know what else might be coming up, I would just be more comfortable with the two hundred.
Okay. And then any, any additional at the end of our discussions would get allocated to the capital expenditure. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, because if we, like Karen said, we can amend this plan at any time. So if there's still the need. For the fire engine and we don't have anything else during the year. We can move that into the. Police fire capital.
Okay. Okay, great. So while we're. We're not voting on this, we will build this, so. On November fourteenth, when we're taking a vote on this plan, there will be two hundred thousand shown in category. Least fire capital. Or operating expenses. Okay.
I guess that should also have. Emergency services. We get to the end of this plan and we have fifteen, we could add fifty for the township.
Yeah. In addition to the two hundred or as a subset of the two hundred.
Yeah, in addition, be fifty for townships. But let's see where we get the other numbers.
Yeah. Well, next year is four hundred is our share and then the township is kicking in some number. I'm I'm just looking at your. So it's twenty twenty-five, we've got fire.
And between us and the township, there's two years of paying on engine one.
Right.
Alone, because that engine is one point three million.
Yeah.
So Marlene's trying to cover half of that. She's got six hundred thousand that she's covering.
Got it.
We're responsible.
For six hundred. Okay, so it's six hundred and six hundred, all right.
If we're comfortable. With Sally and I's term not ending till end of twenty-seven, maybe we could commit at least through engine one and commit to two years of this plan. Because on Wimmy Head isn't gonna. You know what I mean? And then.
Yeah.
At the end of. Next year, we see what twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
But if the spending plan is just for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, if we can.
Well, do a separate, like, vote to commit on that?
Yeah. Because it's kind of like that water project, you commit multiple years. I'd love to at least commit through engine one. So we can plan at budget time better, too. I'm only pushing that for.
So, so the, the, the tips only capture twelve thousand, six hundred dollars from the township annually. So you're, you're giving them seven years' worth of their tax money back.
Oh, we did fifty per year, Marty.
If you did fifty per year, a hundred thousand, yeah, you're giving them.
Significant to them.
Well. The truth be known, if she doesn't have it, she can't commit it. And. From what she said, and I have no reason not to believe her. That when she pays, you know, she couldn't. Pay off the six hundred for half of that fire truck, but you will have absolutely nothing left in her.
Yeah.
In her emergency services account, nothing for another truck, nothing for an ambulance, nothing for.
Right.
Equipment.
Is, is that why you put the full amounts during in twenty-seven?
No, I just put it because that's what they gave me, so I was just trying to get it.
Yeah. So. You know.
Okay.
Okay, so two hundred for now.
I'm, I'm gonna put the fifty for the township in in the parking lot.
Okay.
We'll come back to that. All right, so where were we? I thought that was gonna be the easy one. So I'm gonna go to the very top and say debt service. All right, we have. Eighty thousand I I had put in there as a suggestion. That was built. Well, no, I don't think we need it. I, the dashboard had forty-three, forty-six thousand eight sixty-three. And then the thirty thousand dollar water commitment, so it's seventy-six thousand eight sixty-three is technically the number. So you want to just put that number in there?
Yeah, round it up to eighty, I think it's okay.
Yeah, okay. Brand, bond proceeds, lease financings, tax anticipation warrant expenses. I put in zero because I didn't see any of that in our funding for next year. Or expensing for next year. We'll skip the next line of the capital expenditures, because that's, I think that's our, our.
Catch all.
Yeah, catch all. Thank you. Grants contributions, I had read. I wasn't gonna put anything in there and then I read what it was about and for some reason I thought. Now that might make some sense. You have, you have the Baker Tilly? They define the categories kind of nicely for us and. Let's see if I can find it again. Or no, there was, not the Baker Tilly, Barnes, Barnes and Thornburg. Spending plan. Presentation.
Before that grant slide item, professional services, Marty, is that like Baker Tilly, Barnes and Thornburg?
Yeah.
Any sort of studies? Fees for preliminary engineering on something or could be a number of professional services.
Feasibility studies.
Okay.
Do we anticipate having that many next year?
No.
Projects that would need.
The thing is, when I look at the. Recommendations. Coming out of the twenty forty plan. There were an awful lot of. Study this, examine this, do a feasibility study.
Yeah.
Everything from a community center to revitalizing Main Street, the blighted properties.
If we do do a deep dive on Main Street, the way we've been talking about that. We could want. Some sort of service.
That can be a pretty big chunk.
Yep, yeah.
I think almost every year, we've hired Baker Tilly and Barnes and Thornburg for one service or another.
Correct. And if you add all of those together, the hundred and fifty thousand that. I believe you had for professional services is not totally out of line for studies.
I was thinking that, you know, there would be four or five studies that we may undertake next year. Because we don't have a lot that we're gonna be executing to that we know right now, but we know that we've got a lot of work to do, a lot of. Studying to do.
Yeah, I'm gonna say engage MA to do some of that. Type of work and still be on a contract with them.
Again, it's a maximum plan. You know, I just was trying to make sure that there was plenty in that bucket.
I'm good with the hundred and fifty in there.
You know. Last. Studies or plans that we've had done for the town. For the, that we've paid for, been in the two to fifty, fifty thousand each, forty to fifty. And, you know, you start looking at engineering.
Does that include, I know we have a grants line, is that for grant administration, like for Shannon and Cloud, when we're. Working on the trail projects? For a trail project or Oka Project? We've probably covered Shannon's fees or CRC.
Yeah, we, we have indeed. Yes, that would be in the professional expenses.
Yeah, so.
Grant administration.
You know, if we end up moving forward with our trail project, we end up having the budget for Shannon. So fifty in the grant section probably makes sense. Because some of it could be grant admin fees, but it could also be, okay, we want to apply for a grant, we need to pay ten thousand to get that done or.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Okay. Okay. Karen, are you still looking for that?
I'm still.
Barnes and Thornburg that I. I always come into these meetings organized and then I wind up with all this paper that I can't find, whatever, whatever brought. Okay, so moving right along, operating expenses from non-TIP revenue sources. We don't have any of that here. Military base expenses, but I don't have any of that here. Eligible efficiency programs, when I read the definition of that, I didn't see anything that applied to us for next year. Educational and training programs, now that we can fund. That, that I think Carvon recognized that we're taking some funds from school, you know, that would otherwise theoretically wind up in the school district. So CRCs are able to fund education and training programs. So I put a question mark there. Because we have supported the schools and.
Yeah, like the STEM and stuff like that.
And supporting the schools is something that comes up in our twenty forty plan. And supporting the schools is something that comes up in our twenty forty plan. Um, I'm just not sure what the school would want from us by way of support. I don't know if. Um, Karen, when Karen weighed in, it was not on that type of.
Support. With her, it's usually been a capital type of expense.
Yeah.
You know, I know they are putting up half a million toward the C Y C building, and it'll be on school property, so the school will own it. The club would operate out of it among other potential programming, daycare included in there, or pre K. Educational things, so there might be a need there for equipment or software, or who knows, because they're gonna launch, they wanna bring in, uh, four-year-olds now, I think, like a year younger than what they've been taking, yeah. So they're talking about a pre K program out of that building once it's built. So I could see us putting like fifty in there for now. And that could be a multi-year commitment at some point in time, you never know, right?
Yeah.
I also think if they ever had a grant opportunity to fix up their. They have done some money toward like the baseball fields, and we've done like, you remember when Eric Larson came in and we approved? When I was town manager still, I think we approved, I was like ten thousand for the lighting or whatever. So there could be some capital projects that fit more into education and training, if it's a school asset. You know. Is that considered more programming?
Well, that, that's not, I don't know that it's owned by, is it owned by the school?
Baseball fields?
The little league fields.
Oh yeah, that's a good question. I believe so, yeah, I think so. I think Eric worked through the school board to get permission.
I, I think I remember that too.
Yeah, and we were gonna, when we did, uh, stellar. If we had had enough money left, we were gonna try to do at least one of the baseball fields at the time, we just didn't have enough funding in the Oka. So that's, we only did the soccer field at the time.
But that would come out of the capital expenditures.
Yeah.
Plan, right, so.
Training only programming, or, or could it be a capital education?
I, I just pulled it up.
Yeah.
So very helpful. I don't think we're gonna get our answer here.
I'm guessing it's more like with STEM.
Yeah, I would say.
Software or technology.
Or education and training, like send you to a conference, and send Marty to.
Or, or technical training, you know, that's in line with the business committee, right, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Career, career trade.
If it's really more of that, then I would lower that.
Yeah. I would think. Might thousand more than the kind of most of the training. It wasn't, you know, unless you were going off through. Cause most conferences, the stuff.
It's pursuant to code statute. I can pull that up real quick and see what comes up. Educational programs, work training programs, worker retraining programs. Marketing and advertising of land located in an allocation area. Designed to prepare individuals to participate in the academy.
Okay, so workforce training as well.
Basically workforce training.
M C E D C used to call that one of their missions, right? Um, but that would, you, we could do something with the school's P T L when they have career day, for example, or if a company wanted to do some workforce training with the school, we could help fund whatever that would look like.
It's odd that marketing and advertising of land located in an allocation area is part of this, but. Okay. It's interesting to think about. Kelly, you got any thoughts on that? I'm just curious. Yeah, you know, I mean, we've got. The, the theory is, is that raising wage rates are the biggest thing holding. Uh, 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 the, is the root cause of affordable housing issues in Marshall County, that we don't have a housing issue. If can't afford a house in Marshall County, you can't afford it in a lot of, most everywhere in the United States, so the issue isn't the cost of the housing, the issue is the ability to pay for it, and so our wage rates are just too low, so. What that suggests is that what we should be investing in is program that upskill, right, and that's this category, right? Yeah, it is, Ellie Shook's work is in the bullseye of the target.
Yeah, and they're the only people doing anything close to that.
Right, and this says we can, right?
Yeah, including C T E training, et cetera, so, and Ally's got capital expenses that they're fundraising for, I'm sure.
So we could support Ally potentially through this category. Interesting.
I mean, all the redevelopment should, they're the only ones doing workforce training, training. Hands-on skills training for students, they're having some success with it.
I'd rather give it to Ally directly than indirectly through the E D C.
Yeah.
So we need, I, I would suggest some money, I'm sorry, can I?
If I were to, to say that I would have wanted to apply for a training, just for example, I'm gonna send somebody to apprenticeship, but I'm not in the tip district. And I do that, or in what you're talking about, you send the money out of the township to the Marshall County group, because it's not.
If they're serving, if they're serving Culver's, I would say yes. Or serving our workforce, because some of those students in Plymouth may end up working at cabinet.
That's what I would.
I mean, we're not as likely to have that workforce here as say Plymouth would, which is, you know, probably right, they've seeded C T E training in Plymouth versus Culver and Vienna, but.
It's some royal.
Yeah, I think you would definitely have to justify if it's sort of like saying is this globally okay in the town of Culver is support emergency services for the safety of the community, yeah, you can easily say that affects the tip.
Definitely affects the tip.
Yeah. Workforce training would affect our Tiff area, I think.
If, if those trained workers came to.
Yes.
Benefit.
Came to Culver.
Think outside the box on the training. Of the businesses with additional education. So I know the chamber started a couple times trying to start a program to upgrade the websites. Okay, good, good to C R C sponsor a training program that would help the businesses that aren't in the tip district.
Definitely benefit.
So those are the kind of things that keep in mind, mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talking to cabinet works and saying, is there an apprenticeship option for them, because they are in it.
Yeah. Even see even like, um, a local business person going through the county classes, which there's a fee associated with that, but it would definitely benefit their business and Culver's fifth area, some of those business centers went through years.
That would be nice.
The way the school sponsors them as well, which has an educational training program.
Culver directly rather than watering it down by going into.
Yeah.
County group, even though the market county is doing good things.
Yeah.
The other one would be the, um, I don't know if you could hope with the good and credits. So that is. And you could do some capital things like provide tools, upgrade the trailer, do different things like that, but directly training, and it might help for your, your need to help the school out, because it's a school program, so.
Yeah.
As a.
And those kids generally end up staying, maybe looking for a contractor, construction company, or. So what's that number look like to all of us? Twenty thousand, twenty five thousand, or sixty fifty? Fifty seems high, just they haven't been intentional about it in the past. We could be more intentional if we figured out the problem around it.
Or this year, I would say take it twenty and see if we need, if the need arises, if we spend less or none, or if we, you know. Spend twenty and wish we could have spent more. Then we can adjust to the twenty six. Spending plan.
Sarah?
Yep, I agree, um, with Sally, and like, again, we can amend this plan next year if we wanna add more to it. So I would say that twenty thousand should, to start with, is a good amount.
Okay, let's do that then. I'm getting continuously surprised at the discussions that this plan is generating.
You can tell we're all involved in county stuff, curriculally involved in school stuff, and.
Okay, employee training expenses of industrial facilities reimbursements. That's a mouthful.
Yeah, somebody would have to explain that, I have no idea what.
And let me see what the, what the sheet.
I think that's like if a, a business in our Tiff area is sending someone through uh, robotic training or C T E training or something, we could potentially reimburse it, we don't have a program set up for it. And we certainly don't have a lot of manufacturers that would take advantage of that, because it sounds like, and industry-related type of business, like Culver Power and Tool back when it was actually part of Culver. Versus wherever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't know that uh, our cabinet company does that sort of thing, and it, you know, to me, we've abated them lots of expense already, so. You're on your own with training.
Marina may do welding and stuff because of doing the wood lifts and things, and there may be other things like that that go outside the box, if you started asking people, you might find out there, there is other training opportunities going on.
Yeah, I guess I'd almost wanna see us develop a program before we stick it out there as a random.
Yeah.
And come on in for this little pot of money if you want it.
I'm, I'm looking at the statute, and it seems to be related to enterprise zone. Work, so I don't know that it.
Yeah, probably not so much.
Applies to us, yeah.
Take, probably make that zero for.
I think we should, because it, it appears like it's enterprise zone. Stuff. Okay, alright, so that's zero. I get back to where I was. Permissible reimbursements. Put money in there, so I must have thought.
So I would say that it's probably, uh, the visitor center funding. Because that's rebur, reimbursing their, their, uh.
Yeah. Marketing.
Marketing, thank you for.
And that fifty thousand's a good rounded up number, I think, because we're around forty plus with them, but there have been other small things that come in that are not related to visitor center, I suppose.
I have, I actually had some thoughts as to what they may wanna consider doing some additional investments, so I am expecting. So. Something, well, and, and assuming that they don't think I'm nutty, yeah.
Should we, if this is supposed to be the max and not have to, should we move that to seventy five, Marty? Anticipating some of that?
I think so, yeah, I mean, my suggestions are big, you know, big casino numbers, but if they're asking for forty, I think, at least ten more, if not bump it to seventy five and ask them to, because what, what we're trying to do is develop and develop to the, we wanna maximize our seasonal economy to the extent that we can. We, we're trying to attract people from fifty miles. That's the definition of tourism, right, more than fifty miles away. I think, and we get them today, they come to Culver for more than fifty miles.
Right.
And it has something to do with the advertising dollars that we're spending. But I think a lot of it has to do with, well, people have been coming here for a period of time, they, they keep coming, right? And are we doing? Can we do it better? I think they would say, yes, we can, we could do it more if we have more money, if we have more focus. Um, maybe if we have more expertise.
Yeah.
So I think it's an investment that will pay off for us if we, if we place a bet there. I don't know exactly the form that bet should take, but I'd like to have money to be able to make that investment once we figure that out. So maybe seventy five is the number.
Yeah, I could also see part of the Main Street initiatives coming into play in that category. Things that we have not built yet, program-wise, I know that's not a facade area, but um, similar to facade, just a different type of program that could be Main Street related.
Alright, Sarah, we, we come to that part of the program where we're asking for your opinion.
Yeah, I agree, I wasn't sure where that fell, so I was just assuming that everything for the visitor sender was under the capital expenditures, so yeah, I, I agree, we need to raise that if everything for them is gonna fall into this reimbursements category.
Okay.
And if we, if we do wanna think about Main Street program, we put that number in a hundred.
So it means Main Street would still be, would that still be under the capital ones, or are we talking with that be under the reimbursements as well?
I think, I think the Main Street is more, um, either as a, treated as a capital project that includes a consulting element to it. Or as part of the, um, grants.
This facade is technically a capital improvement as well.
Right.
So if we had any similar program, we would put it on the dot. So seventy five on permissible?
Going seventy five on permissible. Okay, property taxes, expenses, we don't own any properties, so we don't have any expense to pay, uh, for property taxes. Other anticipated expenses. I don't know, I read the definition of that, it, it's nothing that we've had in the past, so.
Yeah, it could be like we were leasing space or something to them.
Yeah, I think the building to.
How's the farmer's market or something?
It may be our goal is to have those in the future.
Yeah.
Right, but we probably would wanna incur those with the town council's full knowledge, so as part of an amended plan anyway, you know, so. So why don't we leave that at zero?
Okay.
With the understanding that if we get there, we're gonna need to let people know.
Yeah, this is basically planned for next year. And I'm sure the state will change what they want us to do in the way of submitting this plan.
Okay. Well, then, um, then it's pretty easy from here, because we just take our one million two thirty eight, eight oh eight, and we subtract we have entered in the other categories, and we'd see what it fits to for the capital expenditure.
It's about four hundred ninety.
Four ninety five?
And that's without the fifty allocated for township at this point. That's just the, the two hundred, the one fifty, the fifty, the twenty, the seventy five. That's just that, the two hundred, the one fifty, the fifty, the twenty, the seventy five equals four ninety five.
That I don't trust you, I'm just verifying your math though.
And we haven't done capital, obviously, but. Oh, I didn't put debt service in there though, Marty, either. Yeah, with debt services, five seventy five.
See, I get six sixty three, so I'm gonna.
Read your numbers to me.
Okay, so I'm gonna start at one million two thirty eight, eight oh eight. And I'm gonna take out, I'll start at the top, eighty thousand for debt. Do this to say. Minus eighty thousand.
Oh, you're coming up with what's left.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just coming up with what we totaled.
Oh.
Good, you're good.
Okay. So I do that minus, I'm gonna do it again, minus hundred fifty thousand for professional expenses. Minus fifty thousand for grants and contributions. Minus two hundred thousand for. Where C vehicles, minus twenty thousand. For education, training. On a seventy five thousand. For VC investment. Six sixty three, eight oh eight. Is the number that now goes, that foots to the capital expenditures. Ending resolution of our township. Debate. What do you want to do about that?
I think. Probably ninety of that should go toward facade at least, right? We do about two or three a year.
Oh, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna break that category?
Yeah.
You're breaking that category.
Kind of thinking about like. You have to set something into the facade program, right?
Right.
Capital.
We've been doing that for. Several years.
Could I, could I ask?
Do we need to do that on here, though?
No, we don't.
Okay.
But what we. May want to do is, is take that fifty thousand parking lot discussion on the, on the township and resolve that. And then come to the next, because the next discussion, the next goal was to prioritize, right? And what you're suggesting is a priority, you know, facade grants.
You're right.
Yeah.
And so why don't we hold off the discussion of the priorities until we just. Finish that.
And look at six fifty three, eight oh eight.
We got six, we got six sixty three for capital investments. Do we want to give fifty thousand of that to the township for? Vehicles on top of the two hundred thousand we're giving the. Town for vehicles.
I would add it there in case. The decision is to. Plunk it in.
Okay.
And I would add it just under emergency services.
Right, so that's what we're talking about doing, we're taking. We would take the six sixty three and make it six thirteen and take the emergency services from two hundred to two fifty. That's your recommendations, huh?
Yes.
Sarah, I'm not gonna put you last, I'm gonna put you second.
Um. Yeah, that would be something, I mean, a one time thing, I. Like you said, Marty, we're, we're kind of putting back in how many years worth of TIF revenue? That we've taken away.
There would be a pro. Five years of TIF revenue from them, we would give them in one year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
A one year.
That still leaves us six thirteen, right?
Yep, yeah, okay. One year commitment.
Take care of if we. Decided to. Purchase a building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then.
Something for Main Street or.
The Main Street.
Okay.
Thing.
Okay, so that is the plan that we'll recommend to the. Commission then. Uh, and. Discuss publicly, and we don't have to have a public hearing for this plan, but. But we can seek public input before we vote. I suppose I.
I would.
This is just have to be submitted to the. The area by defender first, so whatever.
You'd be treading on. Dangerous waters.
I suppose, you know, but I mean. It never hurts to hear, we don't have to agree, right, but.
Well. I think. And that would have been a month or so ago, because we're coming up to the time when it has to be submitted.
Right.
Voted on and submitted.
Well, we're talking to stakeholders, right? We, we've gotten input.
Yeah.
From all the stakeholders.
A lot of this is being driven by the comp.
Yeah, which we got.
Did you get much from Karen Schuman, Marty?
Yeah, I got something in writing, I got three priorities from her.
Okay, good.
We can certainly, I mean, it'll be on the agenda no matter what, the spending plan.
You can ask any questions, they would.
Well, we can move public input to the front of the agenda then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Why don't we do that? We'll do public input at the front of that agenda. Alright. That's how we'll handle that. Good, okay, so now uh. Now, uh, priorities on that capital expenditure bucket. I heard facade grants.
Yeah, I mean, the, the businesses that have used it have really made huge improvements. That I think have even changed Culver to some degree, like I look at what Mark Demore did with his building. You know, that's now open up to the lake and it creates quite a gathering spot. Not by the town. Um. Uzi being able to do the roof. A lot of those downtown buildings. Uh, they're. They've sold or not, they need. You know. Very expensive repairs for businesses that are.
And on the budgets that they, some of them are working on. They, they can't just pull out. Sixteen thousand or. Whatever to pay to lift their building. So, you know, giving them the grant for half of it. I think well worth it.
Yeah.
Goodwill and the improvement for town.
Improved a lot in these buildings.
And oddly enough, the one building that we. Decided we would do the rough. Um, adds a roof to the facade grants, has never roofed their building yet, but.
You know, the. One, one way to look at the facade grants, I, I struggled with roofs initially, that way you can't see those. You know, and I thought the idea behind facade grants was facades, right, to improve the look.
Right.
Of the town. Took me a while to come around to. The idea that. That is, I mean, obviously, those businesses are paying the, the tip. Dollars, right, that we're spending, so it's directly benefiting them, that, you know, it's huge. Huge uh. Reason to, you know, to support. That kind of spending, but also the realization that without that support, that these businesses may not be able to continue, right?
Right.
But it seems to me the, as much as we want to help them. Get through the year, the better work we can do is figure out how to invest long term, so that.
Right.
You know, there's more. More people walking through their doors, because then they can afford, they can afford to do their own routes, right? So I don't want to, I want to make sure that we keep in mind the balance between helping them with their. What would be operating expenses otherwise. That we, you know, are paying as facade grants and making the investments. Frankly, the Dunes being one of them, right?
I look at roofs as. Being an investment in, in our downtown, in our uptown. Um, you know. Because. Any business that needs to do roof that doesn't put one on. Will be a moldy.
Yes, won't be there long, yeah.
Yeah.
And the buildings, the buildings then.
Yeah, will deteriorate to the point.
We're saving the.
Nobody wants to.
Yeah.
Walk in.
I think one. Expense related to any capital investment that we've got to do and it. So the town has taken on an expensive updating of its own ordinance. But as we've talked about with Main Street. There are very likely to be. Needed changes on Main Street, for example, we do not have an ordinance that says you can't have an empty. Business for four years. Some cases, I think there's some five, six, maybe theater. That should not be allowed to happen through zoning. So, but it costs. Some time and energy for a zoning person with that skill set. You know, Sean. It started off as Jeanette, now it's Sean working on our zoning updates. You pay an attorney to do this stuff, it's twenty, thirty thousand dollars. So we need to. Address that though, because we could go in and buy a building ourselves and. Have glorious plans for investing capital wise, but. Eventually, you have to, anyone who owns these buildings has got to be accountable to, we can't allow them to sit empty. And we can't have someone on Main Street not operating a space. Got. Culver Academies is not operating the museum, they're not operating the empty building, that's. Probably in violation of safe. Codes, et cetera. So like, what do you do in those situations? Are we going to be buying a museum and? You know, like, you see what I'm saying, there's more than one fix. There's potentially the capital investment side that you're looking at some of these. But there's also the, we've got to think about. Maybe professional services. Is some legal fees as well, and I think one fifty is an accurate number still. But it's something. I think we need to keep in mind that some of this may need to go toward actual zoning.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point.
Yes. I mean, there's, right now, there's nothing to stop a person from purchasing a building. And. Doing absolutely nothing with it, other than letting it sit there. Deteriorate, right?
Unless we have, you know, stronger teeth in some of our unsafe building as well.
You know, you would hope that people wouldn't. Purchase a building. And let it sit, but. Obviously, it's happened. Or use it for storage. You know.
Do we, in the past, because I haven't been a member of CRC, um, with the facade. Program. Do we cap? Like. Have we just left it open because we typically get three or four? And, you know, the max they can get is the thirty thousand, but do we? Cap our investment that would say we're not going to do more than ninety thousand with side grants?
We haven't camped it because we haven't actually. Gotten to ninety thousand. In any given year, sometimes, a lot of times, people will plan what they want to do in the spring. They start. Around now, getting bids. For. When the weather breaks after, after winter or even during.
They kind of trickle in.
Yeah, and so you'll, you'll get. A couple. Two or three uh in November, December. That really. Aren't going to be done in. Twenty twenty four, they're going to be done in twenty twenty five. And. And some that. Were started in July. May not be totally completed until. It's the money or the invoices submitted until. The following year, so even though. It was committed this year.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes it comes off. Next year, so, you know, it kind of. Kind of balances out, but I've seen some years where it went over ninety. But the previous year that those were coming from. It was forty thousand, you know.
I think we're forty something.
Yeah.
This year, year to date.
Yeah.
With one or two more coming. Um, when. Jump.
Yes, sir.
One sec.
Sure.
All very.
Yep.
Where do the con uh. Sidewalk includes. Mine either. Cost share program.
Yeah, the townhouse one separate from CRC, there's a. Uh, it's budgeted through the town's budget, not the redevelopment budget, um, but this group has supported. Trail projects, which I guess are sidewalk in many cases, because we could consider a five foot. Sidewalk as a trail, which we did over on like Jefferson. Um, and that's been, it would be considered a capital expense.
Well, we also have. If you apply for a facade grant. Sidewalks are included, you know, like if the sidewalk in front of your business. Is. All broken up. It needs to be replaced. You know. We would pay. Uh, what we do is we'll pay fifty percent, the side grant is fifty percent of. Whatever the bill is for. The project. Up to thirty thousand, but it stops at thirty thousand, so if you have. An eighty thousand dollar project. To. Revitalize the front of your building, landscaping, the sidewalk, the driveway, the parking area. You know. It stops at thirty thousand, the sidewalks are included in it.
We wouldn't do like a, so an individual resident that wanted to get. Part of their sidewalk paid for will go through the town's sidewalk program.
Right.
Because technically, you're not in the TIF unless you're in a residential TIF, which. We've yet to have one, although the Dunes will be residential TIF. So, but the trail project, like going through the park. That might draw events, tourism. An amenity that you could consider economic development, we could support a big project like that. But we might not support. You Kevin Burger, your sidewalk in front of your house that has three roots coming up. You know, you'd go through the town's sidewalk program for that.
Yeah, let's think of more uh. Micro type thing that uh, instead of attracting customers. I mean, repeat customers, what you want to generate, don't look for extra, you know. Money coming outside in, what you have is. You know, get return customers here, quality place, you have the academy. So is that some of the marketing efforts there is. You know, you know, people from Shremboigan, great, but. You know, maybe the dollars return investment, you know, a little more academy centric or summertime centric. Floating centric, whatever. Um, then as far as the sod, maybe a grander approach of. Um. You know, Rudy Giuliani thing that is maybe kind of a DIY. Fun where you. Redevelop uh. Alleyways and streets, just, you know, cleaning up uh. Uh, church group, uh, Lions Club, Boy Scouts, whatever. Buy the equipment, we had some tool sets to uh Bob Ford's group, you know, special, you know. Spray gun or something, you know, to help grandma fix her, you know, spray the house and. Clip some trees. Uh, do the genie walk like you mentioned last time, just. Kind of run through and. Kind of see, you know, other than Main Street, maybe there's one place where a simple. One evergreen might visually take care of a negative, take care of the big white open space, and you just have some visual interest, so.
Yeah, I definitely think we can. Invest in quality of place projects.
And my last question is, is that state of Indiana sequence there, is that mandatory layout you had? It's suggested, they don't, they didn't prescribe a format. Just a requirement that we have a plan and that it be presented to our um. Enabling body, which is in our case, the town council. So we've um. We have a municipal advisor and we have legal, a, a legal advisor that we turn to for bonding, you know, work that we do and. They had um. We didn't pay them for it, they just kind of said. To their clients, here's a format that we recommended, their formats are pretty similar, this is, I think, Baker Tilly's format. That's my other two sets is. Still paying for services, just hate it plagiarize.
Yeah.
A lot of things. Oh, we're good at that, yeah, we're real good at that. There's a lot of Culver in the United States and.
Yeah, buddy.
Yeah. Now crap has. Yeah. Oh, absolutely, we're, we're, that's, that's how, that's how we think. And we, we um. We draft off of Plymouth quite a bit. And we kind of learn what they do and then we. They're very, they're very good about supporting the towns and the. Community.
There's a couple of listserv email us, um, like. There's a couple of lists or email us, like the clerks have one. There's also one for like elected officials, mayors, et cetera. Where we all have learned to share, like if you want an ordinance, so like this zoning thing. I've been studying what they do out in Colorado because they're very forest based industry similar to us in a way. On a bigger scale, that's where I first started hearing about it. You can zone out empty buildings, stuff like that. Where some communities might not care if the buildings build on Main Street. You know, and they're perfectly okay with ten of them sitting empty or a storage units. I don't think we want that because it turns into blight too. You've got blighted main streets all over the US now. Because some of those owners have turned them into storage units and. But, so, yeah, a lot of them all share each other's ordinances and, you know, someone will put out there, I'm looking for this. And. And there's even attorneys on that list.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, just almost everything has really been plagiarized at some point.
Could we go to slide thirteen, Karen? Please? Uh, no, we've been at this, guys, an hour and forty minutes. And so, um, I'm going to suggest that at eight thirty, we're done, right? Two hours, right? We call it two hour time limit here. But these were the suggested priorities that I pulled out of the. Twenty forty plan and then based on the input that I had gotten so far from stakeholders that I'm still, still collecting. So this is a work in progress, but I kind of boiled them down to these things. I think what's missing so far is your discussion zoning, supporting any zoning. Work.
Which could come out of professional services, though.
It could, but is it a priority? Is it a priority for us? It's my point. A lot of.
Yeah, maybe as it's related to that shared vision of Main Street. That, that first bullet can encompass so many. Even capital investment wise. Program wise.
Well, it is kind of exclusive.
The way we have it worded there.
Yeah, there it sounds like a study, right?
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it doesn't incorporate your papas the pinders.
Yeah.
And it doesn't incorporate the commercial. Aspect there, ten seventeen, which I, I heard from, actually Kevin was, uh, suggested that we make sure that we don't. Ignore that in our thinking.
Yeah.
Um, of course, there's a lot of things we can think about, right? It's, what are we going to prioritize?
Yeah, and I think, you know, one is a commercial corridor, if you look at ten seventeen. And then one is the retail corridor, which is the papas to pinders, right? There's two sort of entertainment shopping corridors, if you will. And maybe there's a shared vision for the retail one and there's a shared vision for the commercial one. Both would need to be studied, right?
Yeah, I guess my thinking is, and Kevin, help me understand what you're thinking was when you suggested it. Because my, it seems to me ten seventeen is going to just develop. And I don't know that we need to help it a lot or or focus on how to do it. And one of the concerns I have about it is that any, anything that draws retail. Sales there would potentially take it away from, from Main Street unless. Main Street is boutiquey and that is like general store stuff.
And I guess that was part of my point was that should be part of the planning that needs to be factored into that. Is what you want to happen out there instead of responding to it, develop on its own.
I see. So you're thinking about it from.
I think.
Allowing.
holistic of all of these things and and there, like you said, there's growth happening out there that is just happening on its own.
Right.
Want that to happen that way? Do we want to control that a little bit differently?
I see. I took it, I took it from the other direction.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, to grow it. I'm trying to bring it in as part of the whole thing that you're talking about. So that the, it's not the drive by stuff that never even sees the inside of town. You know, what, what are we doing? If somebody does stop out there, what draws them into the rest of town? How do we make those people part of the business community so they're, they're working with the downtown? Okay, that was more my thought than just a, because on, on its own, like you say, it's growing organically. And not necessarily what we want. We, are we going to get, we've got the family dollar and we got the Dollar General. And are we going to get the Dollar Store next? You know, is that, is that? And are we okay with that or do we want to try and discourage that?
Thank you. I'm going to try to break that up and incorporate that into this somehow, along with your papas the pinders. And then yours on me. Okay. Anything else? Sarah, did, do you have? Thirteen up?
Yes, I got it on my phone.
You're looking at it with us? Any thoughts?
Um. Mostly just, you know, we've talked again about the different priorities as far as Main Street versus. What, who was it? Somebody mentioned the entertainment district, basically the Papa's side of Papa's to pinders. So I. As far as, you know, having brick and mortar purchases by the CRC, I think that's great. If we can do things like that to, um, encourage growth in some of these blighted areas and things. And I've also been trying to figure out, all right, what are good programs to bring in? To help bring in these businesses, I think Marty, you and I had talked once about maybe, um, you know, uh. Help with the rent for, for the first year if a business comes in, um, things like that. More directly business related to get new businesses in town. I, I also think the facade grants is really important to help support the businesses that are already here. And agree with Kevin as far as, I think there needs to be some kind of control of. Do we want to keep people towards Main Street or let the building keep going around ten and seventeen to where? You've got more people going out there for restaurants and shopping. In a town this size, I'm not sure how many different areas can sustain restaurants and shopping. If you've got now really three different spots. So having some control over that, but as far as prioritizing on that, I think I would love to see us do something with. Trying to get that movie theater and do something with that. I think somebody last time mentioned if something's going to happen with Bennett's building. There's another one that, like Jenny was talking about, the empty buildings that have been sitting empty for how many years? If we can get zoning changes to help with that. You know, how long four fifteen sat there empty? And lighted, so I think that would go a long way. Those would be my priorities, I think, you know. Trails are great too. I think we've got great parks right now. There are some, I'm sure, some great park projects. I think Hannah or someone mentioned a splash pad, things like that. But I think on the business end, that would help bring more people into if we can do something with some of these properties. And any kind of programs that we can encourage to bring in new business, I would love to see.
That could be called part of our capital investments would be. Dealing with, and that, that was part of the comp plan too, I think, was blight.
Yeah.
Capital investment in blight or blighted commercial properties. Blight, I don't know if that's too specific or it could be empty, vacant or blighted.
Yeah.
And then in some ways, I think Sarah was also saying you can have, we need something under the entrepreneur. Ship slash standing business, so like could be, we're creating a program for entrepreneurs to aid with startup costs. But it could also be expanding a current business. We've not made investment there that essentially could the way we do facade, like. The rental health would be needing a new business. I don't know if you want to call entrepreneur, but you know what I mean?
Yep.
That pocket of how do we aid? Business growth investment.
Yeah, can I maybe? Put a program together and the micro loan stuff doing right, you know, yeah. Okay. Okay, I've got the note. There's two, we haven't talked to the cabinet maker. We haven't talked to the academy yet as far as stakeholders. And I'm. I'm working on one, not the other at this point in time. I haven't. I was thinking we probably need to talk with the management at the cabinet maker. I'm working, Don Fox is, uh, working on trying to get some input or potentially a sit down with the academy. And I'm, I'm planning on inviting. You know, other members here or this team to that discussion if that discussion impact happens. But how do, how do we get the input, you know, from cabinet works?
Very good to bring a contact there.
Okay.
At one point I did, but then they sold and then they fired two plant managers in a row, so. I don't know who it is.
Yeah, I've lost track of who's in charge out there now.
Okay.
Um, I can try to track that down through Greg if you want.
No, I, I can, I'll, I'll get the, I'll get the Greg. Okay.
Let me get her maybe to have a contact there, Marty. They want some of the workforce stuff that.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Kevin.
When you're talking to Greg, it might have had a false start, it had a base in progress when the. All the crossroads had the business development meeting. And had several meetings with downtown businesses, uh, there were some people, business things. And then that just kind of died when we started doing the, the outfit and stuff, so. He, he was the one that was kind of taking notes on that and stuff, so he might have some ideas that fit into your downtown.
Got it.
Revitalization things. I was part of that committee for a while and I brought in the small business development. And basically said, yeah, yeah. Was according to a store and base shop. There's not one within our area and we got a lake, we should have that.
Yeah.
So they were kind of targeting what the businesses were that are lacking. We are target businesses to go have.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think he has some, you know, he was. He was technically in charge, but was just sort of doing that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'll get, I'll get his notes too and I'll bring that to the group. Thank you. Anything else? Yes, we're. I'm, I'm spent. My brain's full. We're all, we're all there. All right. Well, a really productive discussion. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time out.
Yeah.
I know valuable your time is and, um.
Yeah, at least our buckets are more defined from numbers standpoint.
Yeah, right.
Helps go into that.
Really, really healthy discussion too, I think, around the priorities, so. Karen, you good? Sarah, you good?
Yep, all good.
All right, well, we don't need a motion to adjourn. I'm just going to say we're done.
Yeah, we don't need meetings or minutes for this, right?
No, no, we, I, we met.
I'll email you.
Okay, we, we discussed this topic, yeah, and who was there?